Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Welcome and thank you for joining us. This is the City of Aspen City Council Regular Meeting for January 24, 2023. That's a call to order. Could we have a roll call?
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Howenstein?
Present.
Counselor Mesro?
Present.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Mayor Torrey?
Here. This evening, we have no scheduled public appearances, so we'll get right into citizens' comments and petitions. Are there any members of the public? And we'll start on line. If there's any members of the public that would like to address council this evening, I see a Mr. David Scruggs.
Good evening.
Hi, David. Please state your name for the record, and I just remind you that we'd like to allot about three minutes for comments so that everybody has an equal and fair chance to speak.
Thank you. David Scruggs, 212 West Hoptons Avenue, Aspen. I addressed the council in November concerning the Historic Preservation Commission meetings. I requested that they be hybrid in nature. At that time, they had one meeting a month that was in person and one meeting a month that was virtual. Now, they're conducting all their meetings only in person. As you are well aware, the HPC makes final decisions, and those decisions affect citizens' and second homeowner property rights. What I'm asking, when I asked before, Skippy observed it's not too hard to have a hybrid meeting, and Rachel observed it is necessary for second homeowners and citizens who can't get to their meetings. So, once again, I would reiterate that request. The other item I'd like to ask you about is the parking lieu of cash payment. Presently, for multifamily, a parking, one parking place is required per dwelling unit. However, forty percent of that parking requirement can be achieved by cash in lieu of payment of $38,000. That cash lieu of payment was determined by examining costs in 2016. It's now 2023. I think you need to increase that price because you're giving developers a real bargain, and they are not providing parking and electing this cash in lieu of payment. Thank you for listening to my request.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, Mr. Scruggs.
Thank you, David.
Other members of the public that wish to comment this evening that are online? Not seeing any this time. I'll look in room. Members of the public that wish to speak this evening, come on up to the table if you would.
My name is Nicole Vanderboom, and I live up in Starwood. I'm here today representing a new group called Aspen Bear Alliance. We've been guided, supported, and mentored by the Colorado Bear Coalition and the Roaring Fork Valley Bear Coalition. We've been meeting for a few months now, probably since September after our first community meeting at Pitt County Library. Together, we're also working with CPW, Aspen Police Department, and the Aspen Elementary School in a collaborative manner to effect change in how we are all living amongst our black bears. I'm here tonight specifically because we really want and need all of your help and collaboration to kind of change how things have been going in our community, especially in light of what happened last August. And we are aiming to further educate our residents, especially our thousands of visitors that we get each year that might not really understand what it means to kind of be recreating, living, and just spending your time amongst this wildlife. Our collaborators, and now hopefully with your support, will put Aspen in a unique position to become leaders for other tourist destination locations on how we can safely and effectively coexist with the black bears. Every year, we're having wildlife frequently and regularly make its way into town, whether that's because of late freezes in the spring and foodstuffs kind of diminishing and our trash supply increasing. And so, it's really up to humans to make smart changes, simple changes that don't really impact our day to day lives, but will potentially save the life of a bear. And as you know, bear season is rapidly approaching. They're going to be emerging from their dens soon. The sows are having cubs, and everybody loves the cubs, and we get so excited, and everybody's going to be cooing and eyeing, and that's wonderful, and it's exciting, but at the same time, it comes with a lot of responsibility on our part. And we really, I mean, personally, I don't want to see another family of five bears euthanized again because of human error that was pretty solvable, you know, something simple like locking your window and doors and securing your trash. So, I'm here tonight to just kind of let you guys know about us, that we've been working in the background. We would love to work with you and continue a partnership. I have an event coming up at the school on March 15th. We're going to be really working on kind of educating the kids and getting them to buy in on this, because if you tell kids a set of rules, no bird feeders, lock your trash, they're going to go home, and they're going to tell mom and dad. And then slowly, it's like a little ripple effect, and it's something that I feel that is pretty easy to do. We have a website. We have an email account, so I'm going to be following up with you guys later this week, and I really, really look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thanks for the work. Nicole, have you also, are you planning on speaking with the county or Snowmass Village as well?
Yes. We have kind of allotted tasks to different members, so we've all been having action items. We've been reaching out to people, and I have had a couple conversations with Matt and Curtis from CPW. I actually run the PTO at the elementary school, which is why it has been kind of easy for me to get in there and make sure that we're bringing some programs to the kids as well. I really don't think that this is an individual issue. I think the only way we see any kind of improvement and coexistence is if all of those people are at the table, the county, you guys, residents, tourists, the schools, and CPW and the police. So, it's really, that's kind of where we're going.
Thanks.
Just to be brief, I wanted to thank you for bringing this up and taking this sort of issue, this sort of challenge on. We do work closely with our police department, and you're welcome to continue that. And I see a rep from the Chamber of Commerce here, and I wanted to just say they've been very active on the promotion of "How to Aspen" and "How to Watch Out for Bears" and things like that. And we know that no matter all the levels of outreach, there's times when things fall through the cracks, but we can all do better, and I think you have a lot of partners in this. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Other members of the public that wish to address council this evening? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table, and this is an opportunity for council members' comments, comments this evening. John?
Just one. A significant event happened today in Austria. Michaela Schifrin posted her 83rd World Cup victory and overtook Lindsey Vonn as the women's female ski racer of all time so far, and she is not finished.
Three more to go.
Three to go to catch Angamar.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have no comments this evening, other than go Avs.
Skippy, down to your end?
No comments, but sure, go Avs.
And Rachel?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to mention on this past Sunday, there was a gathering of local citizens to mark the 50th anniversary of Roe v. Wade, and the demise of Roe v. Wade might be a better way to mention it. And there were very powerful speakers from the response group, from Cobalt, from Domestic Violence Task Force type of people working with Denver, and attorneys who've worked with people in domestic abuse situations. It was really disheartening to find out very shortly after that, that our congressional representative Lauren Boebert has supported a bill to defund Planned Parenthood across the country, and that the defunding of Planned Parenthood would be for all their services, you know, cancer screening, cervical screening, these sort of contraceptive availability for people. This is really very troubling to me. This impacts the choices for reproductive health and general female health care throughout our region, throughout our state, and potentially throughout our country. And this is something that in Colorado, a woman's right to reproductive health care and right to choose has been turned, has been reaffirmed by the voters again and again, when there've been initiatives put on the ballot for personhood or various limits on abortion and things like that. And we all know abortion is not the most pleasant topic in the world, but it is about health care. It is about women having needs when you find out that you have a failed pregnancy, so to speak, a non-viable fetus, when you have other female complications, when you might need cancer care somewhere in the second or third month of your pregnancy, and they're telling you, no, you can't have that. This is really very challenging. Our representative is trying to strip away services that women throughout the state enjoy and women throughout this district enjoy, and it's just plain wrong. There is no mandate that was in an election that was won by 500 votes to go after critical services for women in this community. It is continuing attempt to make us second-class citizens. I strongly object, and I'd like to invite anyone in our community to write a letter to our representative Boebert to tell her that's not in our best interest. That's not something we've asked her to do, and is certainly not a legislative priority when there are things like inflation to work on and other matters like climate change, which affects our business economy here. So, I'm very, very upset by that, and I just wanted to say that is just something that we do not support. And at a future time, I'd like to ask our board to write a letter of opposition to that sort of legislation. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
You're welcome.
A couple of comments this evening. Number one, things that are more fun to do than this meeting. Tonight at Aces, 6:00 p.m., Lindsey Brownham is going to be giving a talk, and that's at 6:00 p.m. It is about healing the planet and ourselves, so you can enjoy this meeting and get to Aces as well. I want to say, first of all, a warm welcome to X gamers, both athletes and the staff and visitors that are coming for X Games back again. New ownership this year may have a little different look, but not a whole bunch, but I think, as we always do, we should welcome the X gamers with open arms to Aspen again. I wanted to just talk about a couple of items that have been playing in our local newspapers recently. Summer Letters, the editor and the like, and I don't often address comments that we get, but I just wanted to make a couple of points. The first one that I wanted to talk to is somebody wrote a letter recently that talked about the city council and having a lot of 5-0 votes. Their inference there was that there was some kind of collusion or that we were working together and that we were not listening to our community. I really wanted to tackle this because I think it's important for our community to understand. In this case with us, 5-0 votes up here come because of a lot of compromise. We actually don't agree 100% on a lot of issues, except for when we feel that they are in the best interest of our community. So, I really believe in this council has worked hard to get to decision-making in the best interest of our community, and that's why you see us agreeing on final outcomes of votes. If you look at individual items and individual issues, there's dissension on all items. We talk about them. We work together. We incorporate each other's input, and we get to something that, again, we get behind because we know that it's in the best direction for our community. I hope that adds a little clarity to, about how this operates up here. In a lot of the information that we study and the training that we get, consensus is talked about an awful lot, and I think a lot of us recognize that that's not always possible. But through that, like I said, we work together in the best interest of our community, and that's why you see a lot of the votes go the way that they do. Secondly, I wanted to talk about the Newcastle Creek Bridge and the entrance to Aspen. The city has been engaged in months-long of community outreach and information. We've gotten a lot of input back. That information is going to come back to this council on February 13th, where we will talk about next steps. We hear our community. We had a meeting a week ago with our counterparts at the Board of County Commissioners, and we heard their input. It echoes a lot of what we're hearing in different meetings. It's important that this community has this conversation once again. It would have been a lot easier for us to not bring this forward and not tackle this, but we are talking about a bridge that has somewhat of a lifespan that's coming towards its end, maybe 10, 15 years, perhaps, but that's why we have to start this conversation now. We are listening to our community. We will be back February 13th with a lot of that information to decide on next steps, and that is because we do not know those next steps at this time. This is not a process that is already baked and coming to the community. We are listening to your input, so please join us on February 13th for more on the Newcastle Creek Bridge or entrance to Aspen, whatever you like to call it. Other than that, a last reminder, we do have an election coming up. March 7th is Aspen Municipal Election. Please make sure that you and your friends are registered to vote and are getting prepared to participate in our election. Turnout is of utmost importance. We like to strive for as much participatory democracy as we can in our community, so please, if you're an Aspenite, do the thing and vote. With that, we'll move on to our agenda, agenda amendments this evening. I didn't see any. And city managers' comments. This evening, we have Diane Foster with us, as Sarah is having a brief travel today.
Mike and I, as the B team, are happy to represent, and that's it from us.
Thank you for those comments. Board reports for council members, any board reports? I'll start just to lead in. Ward and I attended our monthly Raft meeting last Thursday. I actually just forwarded the CEO report, which is part of the packet that we received. I forwarded that to all of the council members, so you'll see that in your inbox. There wasn't a whole bunch else that we took care of on that agenda, unless you have a couple of items that you wanted to speak to directly, Ward?
Well, we're still challenged to have enough drivers, and I daily get texts. We're challenged for drivers at Raft, and every day I get texts for BRT runs that have been canceled because of lack of drivers. So, the other thing that I thought was really important is the 27th Street underpass that they've been trying to get that taken care of, and the bids have come in or the requests or proposals have come in at like $4 million over budget, and I think-- or proposals have come in, at like $4 million over budget, and I think decision was made to go forward with it, that we're looking for more federal money, federal grants money, but the need is there. There was a fatality at that intersection, and it's not going to get any cheaper, and they're taking some money. Rafta is going to take some money on the Destination 2040 to get that project moving forward and increase pedestrian safety at the 27th Street Park and Ride in Glenwood Springs.
Thanks. You know, I just want to reiterate a little bit about that. You know, Rafta is one of our best examples of regional collaboration, and Ward and I, sitting in on those meetings, obviously representing the upper end of this valley and the county seat here in Aspen, but we recognize that transit is a regional issue, and a regional approach is what works best. So I know we were both sitting in that meeting. Well, everybody was in the meeting just flabbergasted at what the contracts came back at, but nonetheless, we work together and we want to support Glenwood Springs. It's not just an improvement for them, but it's an improvement for our entire Rafta system.
One more thing on the Rafta meeting is that there are a group of people that are going to be looking at getting engagement from some of the communities that are along the I-70 corridor west of Glenwood Springs. That the ridership along that hogback route have, has increased, but there's no funding coming from those communities, and evidently no interest in contributing to funding to Rafta from those communities. So we're trying to get participation and buy-in from the communities that are benefiting from the Rafta hogback route.
Is Garfield County contributing on their behalf?
I think Garfield is not. Is not. Rifle, Silt, Newcastle.
I was under the impression at least one of those had passed the sales tax, but I know Garfield had always said they'd put in out of their general fund, but they didn't want to ever vote for the tax.
Yeah, I think that there's a, there are few people that are trying to get, I think, Dan Richardson or...
Yeah, we've got a couple of members of the Rafta Board from down Valley that are going to approach them again and try to get them involved. Yeah.
Thank you.
Other board reports? John?
Yeah, just a really quick Nordic council. The Spring Gulch Trails are now open, but the grooming still hasn't happened because they haven't, don't have a driver to train. We talked about getting directors and officers' insurance, just as, just as insurance. And also Susan Merold, the representative from Snowmass Village, is going to look into providing, finding a space for cross-country ski rentals in Snowmass Village, because there are currently none available.
They no longer use the golf course?
It got shut down or, you know, discontinued during COVID, and it has not come back yet.
Okay, I bet that.
That's pretty popular out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a difficult place for the touring center up there, and I think Umonir have been doing it for years and...
It's not worth it as a business.
We did have a core meeting. I'll give a little anecdote about this. I had a meeting right after the core meeting, so I thought, well, I have to do this virtually. So I'm downstairs in the electric pass room, and as the meeting's going on, and there's several people in person, and those posters look familiar, and then Dallas, our CEO said, well, anybody that's in City Hall, come on in, I have some Paradise Bay cream muffins, and I realized they were right across the hall, but out of sight, so... We have had a change of guard. Dallas Banley is our new CEO. We've had some staffing changes. I think we're getting settled in there. We had a report on the coal basin methane capture, so that's proceeding, and it was a relatively short meeting, and I did have a muffin afterwards.
Very good.
Glad you found them, Ward. Glad they found you.
That's what I was waiting for.
Rachel?
Yeah, thank you. We did have an APCHA meeting last week, and we, as a board, reviewed the year-end data results from the HomeTrek system, and, you know, I can only say it just continues to improve. We really only had about a half a year's worth of information from '21. We have a full year in 2022, and as the board digested it and looked at it, I think people came up with a few other ways to want to slice and dice the information so that we can really continue to fine-tune the program and have the program respond to the needs that we see there. I think, you know, that might be something that if this board ever wants to or has open time in a work session to have Drew come in and give a presentation, I think it'd be really interesting. If I'm remembering the stat correctly, it was that the average work history of someone who won the chance to buy a home through the lottery was 18 years. So that's, well, you may or may not have been trying all 18 years while you're building a little savings and down payment, but that, that seemed to be the average. So we also spent some time discussing the time of year that the annual CPI increase for landlords is set, so that it could be a little more timely for both, you know, whether it's Castle Ridge or Centennial rental or other renters, when they determine the CPI date, and we're always just getting the money from the, information from the state and the feds and things like that. So that was kind of a technical. We had continued discussion about the biannual affidavit for reaffirming your ownership or lack of ownership outside of your unit within the ownership exclusion zone, that you're working all your hours, and we did beef that up. And I was thinking about it a little after the meeting. In the past, I think they had tried to say, hey, we're friendly, this is affidavit, we're just, you know, checking in. And those are a required obligation of everyone who owns an APCHA unit, to fill in their affidavit and give the information requested. And there are, at times, random audits of those sort of affidavits and homeowners. So we have asked to beef that up and make it a little more substantial in the introduction and get a little more information from people. So that was APCHA, and if there's further to add later, when I switch over to my colleague here, Skippy, that'd be good. I had a couple of other things to mention, though. This coming Monday, the 30th, in Glenwood Springs, will be the Colorado Roundtable Basin for all the counties within our basin of the roundtable. I used to participate with that much more heavily as a county commissioner, but because it's the fifth week of the month, and we don't have a Monday meeting, and I asked Ward off work at the market, I'm going to go and attend that. I think it's really crucial to find out how the programs to save the Colorado River are going, how that might affect us. I've been in contact through other resources, who keep saying, well, look, whatever we fallow on the West Slope has to be matched by fallowing on the Front Range in total, or none of this will be of any real gain to us. But that will be interesting, and that's from noon to 4 o'clock, if anyone cares to attend. It is open to the public, and it's at the Community Center, the Recreation Center in Glenwood Springs, on Monday, the 30th. Last Friday, we had a Colorado Municipal League Legislative Update Call, and I participated with that with Tara Nelson, so she's our city staff, who's always kind of keeping track of that. And, you know, there's a lot of bills going around that we all talk about, but I wanted to bring to the attention of our community and the board. The one is kind of rumbling around, and I don't know how far it really will go, but Governor Polis addressed it in his State of the Union, and there seems to be people working on it behind the scenes now, to assert a sort of statewide control over local land use. And they've believing that the affordable housing crisis is getting so severe that they need to change the ability of local control, and whether it's Colorado Counties Inc. or Colorado Municipal League, local control is a primary tenet of all their positions and foundations. But the types of things are being talked about, and it's also loosey-goosey. You don't know what they mean by it, but that mandating that every single-family lot can have an accessory dwelling unit, without saying, does it require parking space, or, you know, can it have height limits, or side yard setbacks, or what? And Aspen's experience is that you can tell people to build an accessory dwelling unit for their affordable housing mitigation, that doesn't mean they ever put somebody in it, or that it turns out to be used for that purpose, or that it's actually for a working person and isn't turned into a short-term rental. But there's other steps and other things that the state is really thinking about changing and interfering with local land use control. There's already been a letter I've seen from the mayor of Breckenridge, I believe, to the governor to say, look, this may work well in urban suburban areas that you're thinking about, but resort and mountain communities are very different and have very different dynamics in terms of the landscape, the, how zoning was made and why. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, something to watch out for. We all know that housing's a problem, and that if there's two things people hate, it's density and it's sprawl. So there are no really, really easy answers in that. And then the last thing I would say is that this coming February, the first week of February, Thursday, the 2nd, and Friday, the 3rd, will be Club 20's in Rural Colorado, it's the Voice of Rural Colorado Legislative Days down in Denver. I will be attending. The first day, the Thursday, is with the larger rural group, including Progressive 21 and Action 19. So all the kind of counties that aren't metro Denver area will be there. And then the second day, the 3rd, Friday, is more specific just to Club 20 members in the Western Slope. So those are my board reports. Thank you.
I want to take a quick second to say thank you to you. We don't have a meeting on Monday. You took off work, by all accounts, a day off, and no, you choose to go to do some other meetings that are completely on your time and of your interest, and it's on behalf of our community, so I want to say thank you to you.
You're welcome.
You're going to be missed.
Water is important to all of us.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you. Skippy, any board reports?
John covered Nordic, Rachel did a great job with APCHA. Just a few pullouts from the...
Nope, I got it. Don't worry about it. Thank you.
From the data report, which I think are just good to know. Nine new affordable housing units this quarter. That's real progress, so we're excited to see that. 137 maintenance reports, and that's just an APCHA managed, which I think is just illustrative of sort of aging stock and some of the issues we're trying to get ahead of and find new solutions for in terms of upkeep. There were four rental units available in Q4, 430 applications. Gives us an idea of where we are. And then just sort of, you know, anecdotal note, this is, as Rachel said, the first full year of HomeTrek, and so it's been cool to start to get real data on use and all these sort of things, but we'll now be able to start looking at year-over-year performance, which will really help us track longer-term trends in our population and our workforce, et cetera, that I think will just continue to better inform, and all this stuff is available to the public. So it's really brought a huge level of transparency to the system, in addition to new compliance reports that have been made public as well. So if you've been interested about where the housing system is and where it's going, there's a lot more information out there now.
Yeah, even reviewing the tape from Grassroots TV would be interesting to people who are interested in that, and I appreciate you throwing some stats out there. The two little footnotes I would make is that we really only have stats on lotteries based on the units that become available. So if there's more Category 4s that come on the market, we'll have more stats about that than the Category 2s and things like this. So we're looking at it that way. And then a second item that I will bring up and perhaps as necessary, schedule a work session with the council to discuss later, but Matthew, our Housing Board Director, has brought forward a potential program for us to consider related to emergency grants for repairs of existing units for existing homeowners. It's really in draft form at this point in time. He has asked us to talk to our boards about it, and actually, the APCHA board. The APCHA board said they'd like to see some sort of contribution from the homeowner, they'd like to see some sort of means testing that they really need the emergency grant, and that they would have to, of course, be APCHA-approved repairs and put towards those repairs. So it would help us stay away from the type of situation that was the bankruptcy over on Ajax Avenue, when that person had no money for the repairs, and then the unit continued to fall into further and further disrepair. The outline of it as it is now would be asking us, I think it was $100,000 to start from our housing funds, and they would be a maximum of a $5,000 grant. They're hoping to see the county participate with $100,000 as well, and their board is talking about it. So if they contribute as well, it would be for all APCHA units. If the city is the only ones funding, then it would be for units within the city or city-created. So anyhow, we can have a further work session later. I just wanted to let you know that was on the back burner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on in our agenda to our consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar is Resolution Number 4, concession service at the Aspen Rec Center. Resolution Number 14, pedestrian mall and Wagner Park Furniture. Resolution Number 15, water place retaining wall improvements. Resolution Number 17, approving addendum to City of Aspen and Accra Tourism Promotion Fund Agreement. Resolution 18, approving addendum to City of Aspen and Aspen Chamber Resort Association Agreement. A board appointment, and that board appointment tonight. Thank you, David Hyman to...
Election Commission.
Thanks. Election Commission. We did have some other interviews just this past week, but I wasn't able to get council's recommendations to our clerk in time to make our memo, so it'll be on our next one. And this consent calendar also includes the draft minutes of November 29th. Are there any items that people wish to have pulled for further discussion?
I'd like to pull Reso 15.
Reso 15, the retaining wall improvements. Any others? Can we start with retaining wall improvements and Resolution Number 15?
My, do you want to present, you want me to give you what my comments are first?
We'll take your comments.
My concern for 15 is the retaining wall, replacing retaining wall, it's about 30 years old. It's in an area where there have been, there's been water intrusion in some of the housing units there, and my concern was that the soil was being lubricated by the moisture and that there was soil movement, that the hill was moving downhill, that the boulders have fallen off, and I wanted, there are two items that I'm concerned with, is a new wall going to be a permanent solution? And number two, it's coming out of the 505 fund, and I'd like to see that come out of the general fund.
Thank you. I'm Scott Miller, the Public Works Director. This is Ben Levinson, Project Manager with the Asset Department. And your questions, Ward, is it a permanent solution? As close to permanent as it can be. It's steel piers with a concrete cap. It'll last longer than the building, and it's to protect the grades of the patios and the backyards of those units, and it will stabilize that area. It won't protect the whole slope. And the Engineering Department hired HP Geotech 12 years ago to look at the overall slope. And the reason why it is unstable is because the grade was cut too steep at one point, maybe when the road was built, but it is naturally reaching stability, and the county has done a lot of stability work on the lower half of that slope. So what we're doing will protect the buildings themselves, and is it a permanent solution as close as we can get? Sarah and I spoke with Pete Strecker earlier about the financing. He points out that the general fund can handle some or all of this funding, and whatever council directs us to do, we can take to, we can bring back to you in the spring supplemental.
So I'd look for support at this table for having that funding come out of the general fund instead of the 505 fund.
But why is that?
Because that 505 fund can be used for housing better than it can be used for a retaining wall. It's the City Employee Housing Fund, and I didn't have time to talk to the rest of council about this. I talked to Sarah about it this morning, and it seems to me... I talked to Sarah about it this morning, and it seems to me that if we can protect the balance of the 505 fund to deliver housing for people instead of keeping the soil in place, it's a better use of that fund.
I kind of take a different view on that, and that is because I precede the funding for the housing for city employees as a closed loop, and we're creating a fund for that. And when those units are sold back to the city, when someone moves or leaves employment with the city, there's some contribution back in, as I understand it. There's, you know, a limited appreciation, but then also some contribution that needs to go back in. So I just see the 505 fund as more of a closed loop, and we're using that funds to maintain the housing stock we have and the necessary repairs there. I mean, it's nothing to fight over, you know, but that is how I would see it. It's just that general fund is for other purposes. I mean, to me, this feels like we're saying, let's take $200,000 from the general fund and throw it in the 505 fund for the employee housing, rather than take it out of that housing now.
Yeah, I understand. It's for soil retention, and I'm curious how, yeah, curious how the rest of council feels.
Mr. Mayor? Do you want to get some counsel from legal over here? Yeah?
Yeah, we'd point out that this resolution is for the approval of the contract. I think you guys have a legitimate discussion there, but it's a budgetary discussion. The item has been budgeted to this point, I believe appropriately, whether it's from the 505 fund or wherever, but you can certainly change that budgetary discussion. But this notice, this meeting, is about the approval of this particular contract through Resolution 15.
So would this be an approval discussion at the supplemental, fall supplemental or spring?
I think that's where it would be appropriately addressed, sorry.
Well, I certainly support the project.
That's the question here.
Very good. Would you accept a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, we can.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
I don't know if we need to say it or not, but I'm just, if we need to bookmark it with staff or something to come back to that discussion, I'm happy to have it at that time.
Consider it bookmarked.
Excellent.
Yep. Can we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar this evening, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mezro?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
Disappointing letter writers everywhere.
I know. Another 5-0 vote on the consent calendar. Jeez, what are we doing up here? This will bring, thank you.
It's got to be done.
This will bring us to, thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you. This brings us to a notice of call-ups this evening. We have one item. This is the approval of 500 East Durant Avenue. It's a minor development review and commercial design review.
Hi, I just need one second. Okay, I'm having a problem connecting to be a presenter, so I'll just have to give you a summary. I apologize. This is a notice of call-up for 500 East Durant, which is the building where you might recognize Belly Up is a prominent tenant. This is a building that was built in the 70s in the Commercial Core Historic District, but it isn't recognized as historically significant itself. Nonetheless, HPC has purview over any kind of exterior design changes to the building. So the building owners would like to increase restaurant space and retail space on the property and do kind of a facelift to the structure, and that's what was presented to HPC. They are improving accessibility by extending the elevator that currently serves just the main floor in the basement. They're taking that up to the second level. They're extending balconies, adding new windows, adding a new trellis over the outdoor dining space in the front of the building, improving mechanical and things like that. It was all supported by HPC by a five-to-zero vote. The only real topic of discussion was there's a proposal to apply a dark lime wash, almost a black or charcoal-colored lime wash, to the brick on the building. There's kind of limited areas of masonry. There's a lot of wood on the exterior, but nonetheless, it's a character change. And staff brought up a concern, we're seeing this on a number of downtown buildings, and we're concerned that it's kind of erasing the character of the masonry units and the red brick that's seen in many buildings downtown. So we brought that up as an issue. HPC addressed it by requiring a sample that they'll view on site to make sure that the lime wash isn't too opaque. So with that, they supported the project, and we recommend council uphold their decision.
Amy, Rachel?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Is the second floor going to remain as offices, or is that becoming more of the restaurant now?
It is almost entirely to be devoted to restaurant, and there'll be some office space. Sure.
Okay. What I'm wondering is, and things may have changed from when this building was first built to where we are now, but is office space mitigated the same way as restaurant space for affordable housing?
Yes, and the project actually decreases net leasable, so there was not an affordable housing discussion on this.
Okay, thank you for that. And will the exterior become more of year-round restaurant use outside?
There's more generous balcony space, and I think the intention of that, particularly in the south facade, is for dining tables to be up there, and the entire street level, the plaza, will be activated for dining, whereas right now it's just portions of it that were used for the coffee shop.
Well, again, that's why, you know, I'd always thought that restaurant use was much more intensive for employees and was mitigated at a higher level, and this looks like it's really going to create more demand, and that's a good thing, but we know what the affordable housing shortage is right now. Were those calculations looked into?
Were, yes. The land use application discussed growth management and the existing and proposed employee levels, and it was not an increase. There was not a need to do affordable housing mitigation here.
Maybe it's because there was that Chinese restaurant in the basement years ago. Okay, well, thank you very much. Those were my questions.
Any other follow-up here?
I have no desire to call this on.
No, I have no desire to call it up either.
Okay. I don't either. I do look at this, and I wonder if this is going to be, you know, getting in the queue for asking us for putting a roof over the outdoor patio at some point in the future. I still think that that's an item that this council needs to have some renewed conversations around, so. But no call-up at this time?
There is a trellis proposed, and that is allowed, and we do kind of welcome that shading and, you know, making the outdoor dining pleasant. There's no discussion of any kind of walls or enclosure or anything here.
Yeah.
And that's a retractable trellis.
The trellis has kind of a skeleton that will be in place permanently, and then a fabric will slide back and forth across the top. But that didn't require any sort of exceptions or anything like that.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
That's all allowable.
It looks like it'll be a nice project.
Yeah.
Just to offer a comment, aesthetically, I think the project is really, really successful. You know, I think it, like, almost better highlights the historic structure than previously, and, but it still has modern finishes, so I think it's a really nice balance.
Good.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There will be no motion made on that, no call-up. Well, it'll take us down to first reading of ordinances. First one is ordinance number three, 216 West Hyman Avenue, establishment of TDRs. I could take a motion to read ordinance number three?
I'll make a motion to read.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to second, any further discussion, seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote for reading ordinance number three?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mezro?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
Another 5-0.
I'm going to start dissenting on these first readings, just for the heck of it.
Just for...
This is ordinance number three, series of 2023, an ordinance of the City of Aspen City Council approving the establishment of transferable development rights for the property located at 216 West Hyman Avenue, lots O and P, block 53, city and town site of Aspen, Colorado.
Sorry for checking out. I was going to try to fix my connection, but I don't have graphics for this for you. This is first reading of an ordinance to allow the owner of 216 West Hyman Avenue, who's Ann Mullins, to have the opportunity to remove some of the unused development rights on her property as transferable development rights. So it's just something available only to historic properties. It's something that benefits historic properties by taking expansion that is in a sensitive location and putting it somewhere where we don't have concerns about protecting our history on a nonhistoric site. So in the case of this property, the allowable floor area, it's a 6,000-square-foot lot with a Victorian-era home on it and a little art studio in the back. They're allowed 3,240 square feet of development. Existing is 2241, so there's 999 square feet of unused floor area that could be built on this site. Ann would like to be able to create two TDRs, each 250 square feet, and sell them to another site in town. This is something that, again, is a good benefit to the preservation program. All you're allowing is her the opportunity to come in and create the certificates and sell them. She doesn't have to. She could do one at a time, but once they're executed, it's a permanent action. So HPC is now part of the review process. In the past, this simply came to council, but you adopted a code amendment, bless you, some years ago, where you asked HPC for input, because in some cases, this might be more important or have a better outcome than in others. They did unanimously support that you allow the creation of these TDRs, and that is our recommendation to you.
Any questions? This is first reading. It will come back to us. Do you need any information for the second reading? I'll start with Rachel and then Skippee.
Yeah, just for the general viewing public, where might these TDRs be able to land?
Each zone district discusses whether or not TDRs can be landed there. It's generally being placed on single-family or duplex homes elsewhere in town, nonhistoric homes, for particularly big lots. Say, for instance, in Maroon Creek Club, you can land more than one. If you have a duplex, each half of the duplex could land one, but they're each in 250-square-foot increments, and I see this as a good way for the community as a whole to participate in preservation, because it allows the owner of the historic property to regain some other value without necessarily making their home bigger or adding an addition that becomes problematic. So that's...
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, because I support the TDR program. It's just that it's not in use as much in the city as you see in the county when they're using it to preserve large open space parcels. So I just thought that would be a good question to let people know. Thank you.
Just so I'm clear, so 900 available, two TDRs is five, so 400 square feet remains as developable, whether it's Ann or future owner?
499, give or take, yes. We will be tracking through building permits and through the discussion of issuing the TDR certificates to make sure that we have a good record. We file a deed restriction so that it's never forgotten that this floor area was removed from the property. It's all very formally calculated.
Okay, and then, I'm not super clear, so subgrade we now mitigate for affordable housing, but is this 499 just above grade, and then there's additional available below grade, or is that 499 total?
Well, there's 499 square feet of floor area, which still does have exemptions below grade. It's kind of two separate calculations. You look at the gross square footage for mitigation now, but the number I'm referring to is the allowed floor area.
Okay. Thanks.
499 feet, that's about enough room for a grandbaby room or something.
Grandbaby, yeah. I was thinking spare bedroom for me. Housing, guys, we're talking housing.
It's a one-bedroom at the Winfield Arms.
There you go. Any other questions? Any requests for the next meeting?
I know that paint color is not under the purview of HPC, but I would really hate to see this not be the pink house.
Keep it.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I, we have a second reading. I have some questions, actually, of Ann, for a second reading, but nothing that's really related to this. Just kind of want to know about your experience and, you know, I mean...
Do you want me to address that?
No, no, let's do it at second reading. But yeah, I'm interested. I mean, this, to me, is a great result for a historic resource. We've seen redevelopment in other areas of our town that doesn't necessarily appeal to me, and so I really, I just think this is great. And even going through the packet and looking at the pictures, you know, just like, you just get that feel of old Aspen, and it's something that I think is very important for our community to carry forward, so.
Amen.
That's all. We'll talk next time.
Amen.
With that, I'll take a motion.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number three, series of 2023, on first reading.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote for ordinance number three on first reading, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mezro?
Oh, boy, yes.
Counselor Richards?
Wait, is it my turn to vote? No. Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes.
Thank you.
I'll have to pass the black rock down the...
Yeah, one vote to switch off.
That'll bring us on our agenda down to public hearings. Our first public hearing this evening is ordinance number one, Proposed Amendments to Building Regulations Title VIII. Nice. I was going to say, talk about a team effort. It's all good.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was also going to say, thank you for bringing them.
They have school, I could be them, I'm very sorry.
No, 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 thank you for coming down. Thank you. I think you got a second to show, I might have to reverse view.
What I'm saying?
Does it have the option to swap views? Would you like us to wait for Skippee, or you want us to get started?
You can start.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, for the record, Ben Anderson with Community Development. I'm joined here with my very talented, very talented members of our building team. Tonight's ordinance is on second reading. A couple of weeks ago, we had a conversation at first reading. This is an ordinance that updates our building codes, including a series of local amendments, that I think, you know, as we talked last time, and I think as you're going to hear more detail about this evening, really continues to set Aspen as a leader in bringing efficiency to our built environment. I think, you know, while this is a standalone ordinance talking about the building code, I think as we think about this document on the first floor, you know, it's very clearly related to, you know, Environmental Health Climate Action Plan, aspects of the land use code that are encouraging efficiencies and thoughtfulness within our built environment. So we really do see this as kind of a really important piece of this integrated approach that we're taking as we work across the city to implement council's climate action goals. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Bonnie, and she can introduce the team and talk about the specific elements of the ordinance that you're considering this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. I'm Bonnie Muhi-Girwa, Chief Building Official. Joined with me are Dennis Murray, our Plans Examination Manager, as well as Nick Thompson, long time... as well as Nick Thompson, longtime Plans Examiner and Inspector. We also have some of our consultant team. August Haas, did I say it right that time? Nope. He is joining us from Crested Butte. And we also have Shauna Mozingo in the room as well, who can answer questions if they come up.
Can we get the slides to show up in the room?
Can you have August put up his still picture again of him skiing in a white tuxedo?
What?
Working on this other stuff. There he is.
I don't see it. I want to see it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Dashing through the snow, yeah.
Really good work.
I think we'd like to get the slides up on the monitors if possible for both our use and the people's use.
I have texted.
Okay.
So we will be doing an overview of the process of how we got here and then share some highlights of the International Building Code as well as the Energy Code. Talk a little bit about our REMP expansion and the exterior energy budget. So ordinance one of 2023.
Oh, Matrix Day.
Thanks.
A bunch of thrill seekers in the audience, right? Nobody was like, oh. He was like, yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, it was.
All right, let's see what else. Ordinance one of 2023 is adopting the 2021 international codes. The building codes in Aspen are traditionally updated on a six-year cycle, as we've discussed. Currently, we are on the 2015 I-codes. This code adoption package also updates the Energy Conservation Code and brings forth several local amendments.
Who does, who does them?
The International?
Yeah.
The International Code Council. It's done through a process where voting members from jurisdictions across the nation and beyond bring forth code proposals and vote on them.
Thank you.
Yeah. My slides aren't advancing very well tonight.
Yeah, we're having a disconnect between...
That's all right. Bon is here, and all will be well in a moment.
Bonnie, do we have a voting member on that?
We do. We actually have four voting members. It's based on the size of your jurisdiction, and we have four of them. And we have been active in the, in the voting process and bringing forth amendments. Nick especially, this code cycle has been participating.
Aspen's roof and gutter de-icing controls will now be in the 2024 international codes for everyone to use.
Which item was that again?
That is for roof and gutter heat tape controls. Believe it or not, that was never in an energy code before. The Department of Energy spoke in support of it. And it's going in.
That is great.
So they don't run year-round?
Yeah.
Or when it's 70 degrees outside?
And our consultant, August Haas, who's on the call here, was very helpful with that process.
Thwarting the efforts of big tape lobby.
These are some of the challenges of hybrid meetings.
Not quite there. Did we ever really get in-person meetings right?
Complexities have their complexities.
That's right. So Meta at the table today.
As an old-timer, I can recall days when we did all this in paper. Everybody had their packet on the table. There was a stack of them on the back of the table in the council chambers, and we just followed along.
Someone said, "Next slide," and you went...
The good old days.
Sounds kind of nice, to be honest.
Dioramas, poster board, who knows?
Yeah.
Bingo.
I don't know.
I particularly liked, Stephen, when we had the city Forestry Department come in and give us a briefing and handed each of us a packet about that, poor trees.
Yeah.
The arborist.
Yeah, irony.
Kind of, yeah, all right. Okay, I think we're good. Thank you, Bon. So previous council direction, we've come to you for two work sessions, first in May of 2021, to develop the concept of this stretch energy code. We are focusing, of course, on reducing carbon emissions. Some of the first aspects of the energy code were built into the residential building standards that were part of the demolition allotments. And then we came back in September of 2022 to discuss how we were going to approach electrification. We landed on incentivizing electrification with this adoption, and we are going to continue to work towards electrification in future code cycles. This adoption is focused on reducing energy loads that will make electrification possible. I already introduced our consultant team, but again, Resource Engineering Group and Mozingo Code Group have contributed a lot to this effort. Our community outreach has included small stakeholder engagement meetings. We also hosted a public open house. We presented this entire code package to our Building Code Board of Appeals in depth. And drafts have been published to our website and through our newsletter. Since first reading, we have heard from a few members of the design community. So far, it has really just been focused on individual projects and how this would apply. But we haven't heard any significant concerns with any of these measures. We also included in the memo a summary of the stakeholder engagement. If you have any questions on that, we're happy to answer them. There were a few minor changes to the ordinance between first and second reading. These were really minor formatting, grammar, word-choice-type adjustments. There were a couple Scrivener's errors, one of which involved the correct version of the ASHRAE 90.1 performance path. And then the REMP appendix, there was some inconsistencies where we sometimes referred to it as a budget and sometimes as a cap. So it's now referred to as budget throughout the appendix. And then we had inadvertently left out a reference standards chapter, so that is now included. Now transitioning to a list of some of the highlights that are included in this adoption. One change to how we've adopted the codes in the past is that we are no longer adopting the International Residential Code. The International Residential Code is a book that was developed for single-family townhouses, duplexes, and pulled code provisions from the building code, mechanical code, electrical code, trying to get one book that could be used for single-family homes. Because the single-family homes in Aspen are pretty different from your standard track home that you see in a lot of jurisdictions, the book just really wasn't working for what we needed it to do. And we were often referencing the International Building Code. So with this adoption, we are going to be applying the International Building Code to all single-family homes and duplexes. It won't significantly change any requirements for single-family homes. It's really just looking for a reference in a different book rather than going to this one, one book. The International Mechanical Code, Fuel-Gas Code, and Plumbing Code have been used for single-family homes through our last two code cycles. Part of applying the International Building Code to single-family homes is that the International Building Code, unamended, requires all residential occupancies to have fire sprinklers. This is more restrictive than the Aspen Fire Protection District, which has a 3,000-square-foot cutoff for residential, for all buildings. But we felt that for our jurisdiction, we wanted to leave the International Building Code unamended and provide the additional life safety that fire sprinklers bring to our built environment. We've worked closely with the Aspen Fire Protection District to see how this will be applied, particularly on existing buildings, and feel that we have landed on a policy that will work well for, for both of the authorities having jurisdiction.
And just on this topic, so we don't have to come back to it, did you speak with the fire district between the last meeting and this meeting, and they're now comfortable we'll have the water pressures necessary even if things are sprinkled?
Yes, we have.
I appreciate that very much.
Sure.
And the utility?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we talked about.
In addition, on our response to wildfires and climate change, we are bringing in sections from the Wildland Urban Interface Code, which has requirements for ignition-resistant construction for the exterior of new buildings. And these measures will make our built environment more ready to withstand the threat of wildfires. These measures have been incorporated into a lot of codes throughout Colorado as a result of the Superior and Louisville fires, the Marshall Fire. And we're glad that they'll be part of our code going forward. Another kind of interesting thing that is now part of the International Building Code, not unique to Aspen, this is across the country. The code now allows gender-neutral restrooms. For a long time, we have gotten proposals for gender-neutral restrooms, but the code did not allow for it. This drawing shows how you would have individual stalls with full-height partitions, but then shared lavatory situation. The accessible restroom will still have its own lavatory, but kind of an interesting thing that you might start seeing in new buildings around town.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, I've heard there's a bill potentially being introduced in the legislature this year that is going to require a gender-neutral bathroom on each level of a building, not just one in a building. And so I don't know if we'll have to modify the code afterwards should that legislation pass. Thank you.
I had a question, but I didn't know. Tara, were you trying to say something?
Is the baby changing station on each floor? Not necessarily the gender-neutral bathroom on each floor, but there does seem to be one in each facility.
And it's just proposed legislation at this time. I'm sorry, excuse me, it wasn't the gender-neutral. It was that each floor of a building will need to have a baby-changing station.
Got it. I just wanted to clarify, this just makes us restroom-agnostic, right? It doesn't switch a requirement to gender-neutral as a requirement?
Right.
It's an option.
This is an option, but not a requirement.
Whatever you want with your bathrooms, people.
Apparently, there's a travel-distance measurement allowed to a toilet facility, whether one story above or below, depending on the occupancy, within 300 or 500 feet.
Got it.
So that might be changing in the next.
And before you leave, that real quickly, I'll just bring this up now because I've been talking to Tara about this over the last week. I received an email from Marty Moore, who is down in Boulder, with Out Boulder County. And they, she sent us a letter asking for the City of Aspen's support on House Bill 231057. So Tara and I just caught up about it today. So we will have some kind of conversation with you about support for it when we get you all the information that's involved in it.
Okay. Thank you.
1057?
1057.
The majority of our amendment package focuses on the energy code. So now switching gears and diving into the energy code portion of our presentation, this is all driven by the climate action goals. All along through this process, we have aimed at aligning the energy code with council's science-based targets, recognizing that the only way to get there, given the large portion of emissions that come from our commercial and residential buildings, something has to change. Our two primary focuses are reducing energy loads and reducing emissions. These are essential first steps which will make electrification more feasible moving forward. This starts with high-performing building envelope. As we've discussed, these are pretty close to passive house standards with insulation values of an R60 roof, R40 walls, .26, you factor on windows and doors, R20 foundation walls.
Just one question. I realize this is more about energy, but were there changes in the code suggested related to snow and weight-bearing loads on roofs? And are they increasing a little? I just wasn't sure.
Yes, all of our loads here in Aspen have, we exceeded the values that were in the IRC, which is another reason why we have left the IRC behind. The values that we have are engineered in all of our homes currently and for the last two cycles. So new insulated homes will be designed to match the wind, snow, and lateral forces.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. We're just starting to see very unusual six-feet in Crested Butte at one time, or Steamboat, or things like that. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Windows are the holes in the envelope. Even with requiring triple-pane, highest-performing windows, they are still the weakest link, which is why we are limiting the max glazing area to 30% of the total wall area. There's also a new requirement for a solar heat gain coefficient. A lot of times... A lot of times, these windows just allow so much heat in during the winter that they're actually triggering the cooling systems. So that's a new requirement that came out of a lot of our community outreach.
Bonnie, was there any pushback on the 30%?
There hasn't been. As part of the demolition allotment, we first proposed 20% and got some feedback from the design community that that was going to be pretty overly restrictive. So we increased it to 30%, and so far, that seems to be acceptable.
And the 30% comes from the commercial. Commercial buildings were required at 30%, and we thought we would be a little bit less than that. And there was some pushback, so we modified back to match commercial.
Just a question. Refresh my memory. I'm pretty sure we talked about this not in the first reading, but other work session. And I don't know the correct terminology, but in this approach, we're sort of specifying baselines for individual parts. But there's like another approach where you kind of set the target outcome and then let the designer choose sort of how the constituent parts go together. Can you speak a little bit more about that approach? And if we have like, have we discussed that in the past or doing that in the future? Sort of why or why not?
Sure. Let's get down to it.
Do you mean like prescriptive versus performance?
If those are the terms, then yes.
Okay. This is a prescriptive package.
Yes. And performance would be, we tell you the outcome, you figure out all the constituent parts. Yes, that's the question I'm asking. Thank you.
There are currently multiple paths in the code that we've adopted. There is a performance path that takes the total energy, converts it to a dollar amount, and then you would have to show that your energy usage, there's a modeling, would come in under that. There is interest, and we're looking toward, towards a future where we would start aligning the codes with the building performance standards built into the Building IQ program. But we're still a ways off of really getting towards that type of performance code.
Got it. So I understood that in the future, that's a possibility as we kind of align with IQ and others. But did you also say that there is a path currently to go down that? Okay.
I support going along that, that path.
Yeah.
But I don't think any community has done it yet. To have a goal to start phasing that in, I think, would be important. We do have an energy budget for, for outside, exterior, so moving kind of in that direction.
Yeah, that's good.
Anything you'd want to add to that, Shauna?
You have to come up to a microphone.
Yep.
I have a feeling.
You're not speaking into it.
Currently, the, the energy code for the last, I don't know how many, how many cycles since its inception, has included a bunch of different paths of compliance. Prescriptive, just tell me what I have to do, that's what I'll do. Right? That's kind of the easy way, but it's not necessarily the cheapest or best way. And then you have a, a total UA where you just look at the whole envelope of the building and make sure that it, it's a decent envelope and you can trade things off. I could put in a better window by maybe less insulation or whatever. You could kind of make some trade, but still have to meet a budget. Then there's the performance approach, which says, okay, it, it takes the prescriptive requirements behind the scenes, and it's a computer modeling where they say, okay, we're going to model this building and with, we're going to compare two houses side by side. One is built to code, prescriptively, and one is the way that we want to build it. And as long as the way you want to build it, using different insulation, or you know, less than code here or above code there, you, as long as the way you want to build it uses the same amount or less energy, either in VTS or dollars, then you can build it the way you want to. So that's always been in there, and we're not proposing to change that. Then there's also an additional path of an ERI, which is like a HERS score type of a path of compliance. So there's four different paths that have been in there for a long time, and we're not proposing to remove any of those.
That's super helpful. Thank you. Choose your own adventure continues.
Apologies for my cold. I've got a mask to keep us all safe. The next thing we're looking at doing is expanding commissioning of HVAC systems to residential. Commissioning is the practice of verifying that HVAC systems actually work as they're intended, as they're designed. It's something that is currently in our old code for commercial projects of large systems. Our residential homes typically have HVAC systems that are as complex as commercial ones. Making sure that those work as intended will increase user comfort, save them money, and save energy. Next slide.
Nick, I think in first reading, you mentioned the, the energy usage of HVAC systems was, it just shocked me. It was over 60% of the energy is HVAC.
Of the actual building energy use, not thinking about the exterior energy. But yeah, once you start looking at the exterior energy, yeah, it's, it's a massive amount. The next would probably be plug loads. An interesting thing that we recently heard from an HVAC designer was that some of these new single-family homes, the HVAC systems, which are super complicated, can be upwards of 30% of the project budget.
Oh.
So ensuring that they are working correctly, I think, is in everyone's interest.
Yep. Absolutely.
Additionally, along the path of energy use, we don't actually currently have a great handle on the specific energy use of Aspen buildings, both residential and commercial. What amount of energy use a new building to this new code versus existing buildings that are altered and brought up to a higher level. We're proposing to expand, well, we've already started in the demo allotment program, which requires those projects to sign up for the Building IQ benchmarking system. We're going to expand that to new construction additions and major remodels for residential and commercial. And that will hopefully, that will help us to understand our energy use and drive policy thinking and decision-making in a more targeted way in the future. With Aspen's grid 100% renewable and Holy Cross is set to be by 2035, the biggest impact that Aspen can make towards its climate goals is to electrify its buildings. And the only way we'll reach our climate goals. However, this is a complicated endeavor. As we touched on previously, it will take thoughtful and collaborative approach over time. So we're here today to propose some initial steps in that direction. In order to make buildings ready for being electrified, this code adoption is proposing to require electric-ready circuits to be installed where they make sense. This includes residential stoves and dryers, solar PV, battery storage, and electrical vehicle charging. Our old code currently requires EV charging readiness for single families. We're going to expand that to multifamily. Every single unit that has an off-street parking space would get a plug-in receptacle ready to go, to charge. And commercial off-street parking spaces, new ones.
Can you get the, the off-street parking, is it one per development, one per space? Is it wiring that can then be expanded for use across multiple spaces? Can you dig into that?
Sure. So to speak separately of residential, that is just running the circuit and the outlet for a minimum of one per space or per unit, whichever is less. And that is with the thinking that a tenant doesn't have the ability to upgrade a circuit, or sorry, a conduit, or put anything in there if it's not there to begin with. As for commercial, it's a little bit more complicated. We've got a series of different requirements based on the type of business. If that's a theater or a restaurant business, there are different percentages. And we've set ours to be in line with the Colorado state requirements that are coming out. And actually, to go a little bit beyond that, we are requiring a DC fast charge if you have five spaces or more off, off-street. And then there's some numerous other details. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I could dig into if you'd like.
I guess my only follow-up is, you know, even when we were talking about our city EV plan is just, you know, relative ability to deliver power versus future need. And so we feel like we're in pace with that as it develops.
Yeah, the intent of this is to set us, the community up to be able to meet the electric vehicle ambitions of, of our climate action team. And our understanding with talks with utilities is that this should be feasible.
Okay.
A lot of the power requirements are taken from the 2024 codes, and they offer flexibility where you may have, there's basically some degree of demand, a smart allocation where if you've got one car charging, it's delivering this much voltage, but if, or amperage. But if you've got maybe five or six charging, it's going to be the lesser.
I see.
To make it more feasible.
Okay.
Nick, there are three types of chargers, a 110, 220, and then the fast charge is three phases. Is this a requirement for, for the middle category, a 220 cable?
This is the 220. Yep. Apart from the DC fast charge that I mentioned for the large, commercial off-street parking.
Nice.
Okay. We can go on. In addition to the electric readiness provisions, we are encouraging buildings to go further and fully electrified by choice. This is, provides a value to the community by incentivizing some early adopters to help work out the kinks. But then we provide, they get value back by being expedited in their permanent review, which at first reading was approved by council. In addition, we are proposing that any new AC unit be a heat pump. Cooling equipment is typically not really necessary in our climate with the building design to our robust energy code. However, if you'd like to install it, it makes sense to spend the nominal increase in money to make it a heat pump. That's a great opportunity to do that, and hopefully that will drive further use of, or electrifying of these buildings.
Just for my better definition of it, can you describe what a heat pump is and how a AC unit can be a heat pump, too?
Sure. So an AC unit basically moves heat from inside the building to outside the building. It pumps heat out, but it can only go in that direction. A heat pump can go in both directions. So it can pump heat from, unbelievably, from the frigid, outside cold into the building. So it's capable of running in both directions.
Thank you for that.
Some great YouTube videos on that. Really exciting. Nick will send you a link.
Yeah.
Again, I'm going to split wired tomorrow. After two years trying to get it all done.
Hate to hear. Previously, we showed you a PARI chart showing the Aspen's built environment being 57% of Aspen's climate emissions. Those are all existing buildings. So if we don't do anything to existing buildings, we're never going to get where we're trying to get. So we'd like to improve the energy performance of them when they decide to remodel. Depending on the scope of the remodel, it's often the most cost-effective time to make these improvements. And we've set some flexible requirements based on various scopes of work that are realistic, allow variances for feasibility, and are based on the upcoming 2024 national Currently, Aspen's RAMP program requires the energy use of snowmelt pools and spas to be fully offset by onsite renewable energy or payment option. This new code proposes to include heat tape, gas fireplaces, and fire pits, both interior and exterior, as well as outdoor heaters, of which only electric would be allowed, to be fully offset with renewable energy or payment option, as supported by council at first reading. Even with RAMP offsetting the energy use of exterior residential amenities, and to be clear, this is about residential exterior energy use, the, the energy use of these amenities is staggering. We're proposing a budget of 200 million BTUs per year max. In the chart, that is the energy use of a actual Aspen 7,000-square-foot home. The left column shows the energy use under our old 2015 code, the middle one per the code in front of you today, the 2021 code. And then on the right, with the 200 million BTU per year exterior energy budget applied. That requires the pool, which is shown, the energy use of which is shown in gray, to be deleted, and the snowmelt in purple to be reduced. You can see how much of a meaningful impact that has while still providing for extensive amount of snowmelt and other exterior amenities, including 2,000 square feet of snowmelt, plus one exterior plug-and-spaw, a large, very large exterior fireplace, and plenty of heat tape. This will be the most meaningful portion of the Energy Code amendments in terms of energy and carbon reductions before you today. And it will also make the electrification of these amenities more feasible in the future. Council supported this budget at first reading. In conclusion, the code change proposal before council is a robust one that responds to Aspen's specific climate change needs and continues the tradition of Aspen being a leader. Consider this code adoption a huge step in Aspen's history of big steps, but there's much more work to be done, including the formal adoption of the RAMP calculator next month by resolution, which will enable the calculator to be more nimble than if it were adopted as part of this ordinance. Additionally, we've received support from council to move forward with the formation of an electrification task force to tailor electrification to Aspen's needs and to more frequently update our energy code to respond to the rapidly changing environment.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we'll open that in just a moment. But are there any questions from council members at this time? Skippe?
Yeah. At the last meeting, I was asking for more information on sort of kind of how these changes affect the, the cost of various projects, specifically with an eye towards sort of last remaining affordable, whether that's residential or commercial. And I was expecting more to come back. So do you guys have some thoughts on that?
We're still working with PNL, who does cost modeling to get the specifics on what percentage increases the cost would have. Our sense is that, you know, for affordable housing, there is going to be some costs to improving the envelope, but that's an upfront cost that is going to be realized over time in savings on, on utility bills and benefiting the community overall with the emissions reductions.
We have scheduled, and we are looking for information. They just couldn't get it to us by today from PNL. It's a Civic Northwest Labs in Seattle.
Yeah. I guess my, my concern, and we can talk about it more later, is just, these are all great improvements, right? These are meeting our climate needs. Clearly, we need to do these, but you know, I don't want to be unintentionally opting into, we just added a quarter or a half million dollar to, you know, the trailer park remodel, which is the last naturally affordable housing that we then have to go build something else for. Or we've just, you know, unintentionally raised the price of a hamburger to $40, so now no one who lives here in affordable housing can eat. And that might be the required trade-off of these changes in the short term, but I want to be able to have that discussion. So if we need to make amendments on the other side to do that, and it feels a little uncomfortable to move forward without that information.
One thing I could say about the, the affordable housing in the trailer park specifically, we actually have a we actually have a project in for permit right now that is exceeding these proposed thermal envelope requirements.
And all electric.
And it's all electric. Yeah. We're seeing multifamily affordable housing projects come in like this because it makes sense for an affordability standpoint as far as utility bills go for the user down the road.
Yeah.
Also, one of the challenges with PNL of having, it's more than just looking at the energy save, or sorry, the cost savings through an energy improvement. It's challenging to put a metric on the qualitative improvements and comfort and in life safety and health, as well as the social cost of carbon.
Got it.
I would just add to that, we, in doing this, we spent a considerable amount of time with the Department of Energy and Pacific Northwest National Lab, running everything by them. Like, does this make sense? Is it doable? Are we being responsible? Are we still, and just making sure that those costs, they are, they have a methodology where they figure out the cost of one energy code versus the next, you know, from the 15 to the 18, what does that cost difference? What is the energy savings difference? What is the emissions difference? And so they figure that out for each code. And so they figured that just the, from the 15, which you're already on, to the 2021 base code is about, I guess, because you have two different cycles, about 11% difference. However, Aspen was never on a base code. They've always been a little bit better. So you can't just say, well, you're going way above code because you never were on that code. And so you want to look at, one, what is the cost difference of going from Aspen's base to Aspen's new base? But also, I think, I do a lot of residential and commercial studies for the Department of Energy to just see what people are doing. And one thing that we've learned in Colorado is, and especially up here, nobody was doing base to begin with, right? So if I say, oh, well, there's a huge cost difference from going from an 80% furnace to a 96, yeah, that's true. But nobody was, is putting in an 80% furnace. So what are they doing? Between 92 to 94, so what is the cost difference of that, right? And so when we started looking at all of these costs, we were looking at, what are you already doing? Not what the base code says, but what are you already doing? And what is that difference of cost? Much less, because people are already going there. And we really did a lot of research on what are they already doing for insulation? What are they already doing for boilers? What are they already doing for everything? And so that cost difference is a lot less. And we are going to have, and I will make sure that we provide to you, PNL has agreed to me to, PNL, Pacific Northwest National Labs, they're a national lab for the Department of Energy, and they have agreed to take Aspen's code, just Aspen's code, for commercial and residential, figure out what is the cost and the savings, and provide that information to you so that you have it down to the fine details. It's just, this was all happening over the holidays when everybody was on vacation, so they didn't get it to us in time.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And, you know, it's good to know that there's, you know, sort of regular systemic check in with organizations that have some baseline expectations on inflation and all that. I just am mindful of, you know, to our point, right? We don't have normal homes. And so we tend to make our regulation for the homes that really are hotels in other communities. But there are other types of homes. And so when we take those standards and apply them to this type of development, sometimes the outcomes have trade offs that we don't want.
Truly. And I think that it's important also to remember that some of those other, maybe the smaller homes or the smaller businesses, will not have the same amount of code requirements.
Right.
Some of the stuff that we've put in here will not even apply
Right.
to some of those. They're not putting in that many windows, or they're not doing that big of equipment. So they're not going to have those requirements anyway. So.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Just to comment on your comments, Skippy, which I think are really important, that there are going to be federal grant money and rebates from not only Holy Cross, but from the government and Core and the city. We're all working on trying to get as much federal money as possible. So there are, there are ways to reduce the cost of energy efficiency.
You know, I would just say, I want to use all that as much as we can, and I appreciate this work greatly. But for me, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And, you know, our affordable housing should be as energy efficient and not contributing to emissions as our free market residentials are, in my mind. And I realize there may be a cost to that, but I don't want to have a double standard. And my life as a working employee here contributes to emissions. And if my home was a little more efficient, I'd feel better about it, you know? So I am not concerned about that incremental cost increase. I think it's, it's important that we're all contributing.
Yeah. And I mean, just to be clear, you know, on our projects, I certainly support it, as we all have, the most environmental. So it's not about how do we create a lesser class of environmental thing. It's just mindful of the unintended consequences that can sometimes come from high standards for particular types of development that are, you know, good for the community.
And in the long run, the energy savings is, it contributes to the cost of the improvement.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that detailed explanation on that.
John, did you have any comments here?
No, just really excited about this moving forward.
Okay. If there's no more questions of staff at this time, then I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, I did want to make a note that we received an email today from Johnny Coker with the Rocky Mountain Institute in support of the adoption of the new building codes, but also going beyond that to express support for this council and Aspen's greater goals as well. And I also want to make a note for the public that part of our packet indeed had stakeholder feedback. Thank you for including that tonight. If you look through that stakeholder feedback, there's no real red flags that come up, but rather, it's just good information and good input. You'll see a lot of support for many of these measures. With that, I'll go ahead and open the public comment portion of this hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment this evening on the proposed amendments to Building Regulations Title VIII? Come on, come on up.
Now, one of you guys has to make a seat for him, or we're getting done.
We're not doing human pyramid tonight?
Good evening, council. I'm Stephen Knite, former employee of the city, and thinking-
And future.
Time will tell.
Future king.
One of the things that has come up is that there have been many, many iterations of our energy code. And as we have commented already, we have prided ourselves in leading the way on that. And I was reminded of some of the work that I did with Randy Udall. And he championed the RAMP program after some of the Swedish carbon offset requirements. And in his very gentle and comprehensive way, talked everybody into it because it was the right thing to do. And one of the things that he mentioned was that most of the buildings that were being built, and this first came around in 1999, said they're on life support. You know, when, when something happens, there's no way that these buildings can really deal with what we don't know may happen. But as we see these robust envelopes, we see some of the renewables that are going on, it makes them much more resilient and in the long run, sustainable. And just the, the realization that there's going to be so much thought going into this design from conception to permitting, to inspection, to everything that the, this group here is responsible for from beginning to end, I think is such a positive statement for, for this community. So I just wanted to pop up out of the weeds, out of the woodwork, and congratulate this, this group who has done such a good job of bringing all that together. Thanks.
Stephen, I'd like to say that both John and Skippy have mentioned oftentimes that we're standing on the shoulders of giants. You're a giant. Thank you.
Amen. Nice.
Thank you. Other members of the public this evening? Come on up.
Hey, everyone.
Hey, Dallas.
Hey, Dallas. I'm Dallas Blaney. I'm the CEO of Core. And thank you for mentioning Randy. I'm walking around in very big shoes I have to fill. So it's, it's a little daunting sometimes. I'm obviously here to support this ordinance. I want to remind everyone, whether you're watching on the camera or here, that there are six years and 341 days left to reach our climate action goal of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions by 63%. And this is a key component of that effort. It's not going to get us all the way there. As you heard today, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the built environment, the existing buildings. That's really where Core tries to focus its energy, no pun intended. But I just really want to make that point because I think that'll maybe help us focus a little bit. Another thing I want to share is that city staff and Core has been working very hard and very closely with the Colorado Energy Office. A lot of the federal dollars that are coming out are going to be funneled through the Colorado Energy Office. I went down there and spent an afternoon with them about a week ago. And we've been working with them specifically around code issues. And they're proposing, I just saw the first draft of it today, a concept paper to the Department of Energy for $10 million. And one of the things they're asking for is funding, in large part from our urging here in Aspen, to support above minimum code implementation. So some of the questions about, you know, how do we cover some of the costs, and specifically thinking around even things that maybe we haven't talked about today, like building inspectors, things of that nature, that's really what this concept paper speaks to and intends to provide some support for.
That's awesome.
There is also, to speak to Ward's point, everyone I talk to you guys is saying that there is a ton of money headed our way. The Colorado Energy Office, I'm not supposed to share this, is still, still spending some of the ARA money back from the Obama years. So all this money that's been coming at them is just piling on, and they're trying to figure out how to spend it effectively. So there's going to be a lot of money coming to help support some of the things that are being proposed today. So hopefully that'll be encouraging as well. The one thing I do want to highlight for y'all that may be a bit of a challenge for us going forward, and I may be coming to you later this year to talk more about, is workforce development. A lot of these systems that we're talking about adopting, they're really wonderful, heat pumps, et cetera. But as Ward has experienced, we have a shortage of trained professionals in our valley. We're in better position than some. Summit County has a much harder time with this. But there's definitely a huge need for additional workforce. We're talking about electricians. We're talking about plumbers. We're talking about HVAC professionals, weatherization, all of it, and upskilling the people who are already in our valley doing this work. So there's, there's a big push underway. More and more people are beginning to realize that. But I just want to make you all aware that that's a challenge we're going to have to wrestle with as well. But thank you all so much.
Thanks, Dallas.
Dallas, I haven't had a chance to meet you yet, and we've been exchanging emails at times. So I wanted to say thank you for being here and sitting through the rest of our meeting, just for this, this comment. And then it also strikes me, you're forming so many good relationships and partnerships with people to really talk to CMC a little bit about that workforce issue. Because we talked to them years ago, and I think they've eventually moved forward with some things on mechanics, because they, nobody was getting bus drivers or mechanics. And when the oil boom went off, you couldn't get a mechanic for love or money, because they could pay so much over in the fracking fields. And so I think that they've also introduced culinary arts, and they're moving that forward here, things that support community. So talk to Steve Scadron and, and see what, what they might do to be able to bring a little more trade type of programs into their college.
Is it okay if I respond to that? I've got some information on that.
Oh, okay.
And it was actually your urging. So I, I did reach out to Colorado Mountain College. We, we talked several times. We're supporting a grant proposal that they're submitting for workforce development. Unfortunately, right now, they're looking at Craig as the location for building out a workforce development center. There's some work happening here in the region, too. I've been pushing and urging them to, to base it here. But that's what they're looking at right now, and they want to expand over time. So we are very much working with them on that. We're working with Northwest COG, the Colorado Energy Office and others, including the Economic Development Agency. We're actually looking to submit a proposal right now, do a workforce development study. So we have a better understanding of the challenges we're going to be facing and figuring out how best to approach those.
That's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Dallas.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dallas.
Other members of the public that wish to speak tonight on the proposed amendments to the building regulations? Either online or in the room. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. John?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance one, series of 2023.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion at this time?
Well, I think Chapeau has hats, hats off to all of your team and all the work that you've done over the last few years to bring this to us. And the, the benefit to our community is something we should really be proud of. And we can be proud of it from a community why, but you, you guys are the rubber on the road. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Ward. Other comments?
No, I just want to say thank you as well. This has been a, a long journey. And as Stephen said, it's nice to continue to lead at the front of the trail.
Ward has said it well. These guys have all said it well. Thank you so much for continuing Stephen's legacy and all, a mop, how did that happen? I, everybody else has said it well, so I won't be long. But thank you for continuing Stephen's legacy and the legacy of many who've been with our building department for so long, like you, Dennis. It means a lot. I, I think I was mayor when we introduced the RAMP program. And so to see it growing and continuing to have benefit, it's really meaningful. The one comment I would kind of make about the broader topic of building codes and so on, is I was listening to a discussion a number of years ago about whether or not they should include a, a outlet in the ceiling for a ceiling fan. And it was like, well, we can cut this much off the budget to build that house by not wiring it like that. But the next owner is going to have to pay to cut through the drywall and patch the drywall and do that to get the same feeling, ceiling fan that's going to recirculate the heat or the cool air back down. And so it's just so much more cost effective and the quality of your life when we do these improvements in advance and people aren't trying to retrofit. You know, that's, that's literally what building IQ is about, is starting the process of retrofitting. And this is about preventing the need for future retrofitting. So I really appreciate the work, and I think it will pay off quite well for our community and hopefully for our future snowpack in 20 years. Thanks.
John?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the building department again and all of ComDeb, and thank Shannon Mazingo for her help. It really does feel good to, Ward and I recounted this story about going to that conference, I think it was in Breckenridge.
The more recent one.
And your quote about, there was a Q and A, and somebody asked what they could do to make their code better. And your comment was, well, you're never going to be as good as Aspen, especially what they're working on now. That felt really good to me, and I know that felt good to all of us.
That's what happened when you said that.
But one thing I want to warn us about is to not get complacent. This is something we need to continually work on to improve as the planet heats up. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I don't know if I'm allowed to say anything, but-
You're allowed.
Just to that point, I would just say that I work with a lot of jurisdictions, right? And I think you were talking about the CML conference, that I was talking about what people are trends in building codes. And I work with a lot of jurisdictions. And I work with a lot of jurisdictions. And one part of going, saying that Aspen, you're not going to get better than Aspen, was yes, about the efficiency and the great code, but also about the thought and the work that went into it. A lot of jurisdictions write a code and adopt it and then let people have impact after it's in place. Or they write it in three months. Or we've been meeting every Thursday for almost two years. I mean, you know, and throwing things at the wall and saying, yeah, we just don't have enough info. I just don't feel comfortable putting that in your code. And so it's been true, true diligence by these guys. I mean, they're just amazing. And so I don't think that there's any worry moving forward that anything that ever goes into this code won't be thought out because honestly, I will say honestly, I have never worked with a more diligent team wanting the absolute best for you. So it's not just the resilience.
For telling us that. They're turning red.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a brief comment, and it's interesting to me, you know, as we've been looking at this for years and we upgrade and update our codes and we continually push for environmentalism. It's interesting, we seem to be at a place where it's not such a hard push. You know, years ago, it seemed like everything that we were trying to do to gain efficiency didn't work for the builders, didn't work for dollars and cents, and et cetera. And it just feels like we've turned the corner a little on that. In what you've brought back to us, again, I don't see many pinch points. And the comments from our stakeholders kind of reflected that. They actually, in their comments, what came through several times was the fact that they, we need to decrease load, right? So they're saying, hey, we can do all this great work out here, but really, there's a responsibility that goes into home owning and building. And we're seeing that responsibility be able to be bared by the people that are supposed to bear it. And so it's just, it's come a long way, and I thank you guys so much. I've gone through this once or twice before, and there have been objections, loud objections to certain things, and those are kind of behind us. We're in a good place with this, but thank you guys for your work so much.
Thank you.
With that, we have got a motion and a second. I would take a roll call vote. Once again, this is for ordinance number one.
Counselor Doyle?
Enem Vatic, yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Joyously, yes.
Counselor Mezro?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yee-haw.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes.
I was just thinking, this is my last code adoption in 30 years.
Well, just like Stephen, for now. For now.
For now. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on. Thank you guys so much. We'll move on our agenda. This brings us down to ordinance number two. This is the formalization of Grant Steering Committee. Council members, it is a little bit after seven. We have got one, two, three items left, and they shouldn't be too long. Shall we just keep going?
Off through.
Thank you. Does anybody need a quick break?
I'm going to go away, but don't stop the meeting.
Okey-dokey. So here, ordinance number two, I think John Barker might be coming up here, or... Somebody that looks just like him.
The cloning program is moving along swimmingly.
You guessed well. As counsel provided, no changes of direction to the original submission in the first reading. I don't have a presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have about the ordinance.
Thank you. Counsel, questions?
No questions.
This is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open up item ordinance number two for public comment. Are there members of the public that wish to comment this evening? Looking in room or online? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. And we'd like to have her in here, right? Her votes are limited for right now. We want every single one of them. Okay.
Whose turn is it to vote no?
No.
I would like to move that we adopt it.
There's a motion.
Second that motion and make comments if it helps fill time.
And I have a second. Is there any discussion? Skippy.
As long as we've got this moment, this is great. I mean, this is, you know, grants are one of the things that, as a community, we are extremely lucky to be able to do. Most communities don't get to do this, and we get to do it across the spectrum and support nonprofits and organizations and everything, from food banks to artists and, you know, the rest of it. And that process sort of unfolded organically over time. But as it grew, more formality was needed, and more accountability and transparency were needed. And so this is, you know, now two years of working through that. And I think it's been really effective to have, you know, three separate groups with area specialty, but to have the steering committee over that, that on a regular basis realigns our approach and our giving to community values of that moment so that we remain targeted and efficacious, but also... Oh, perfect. I'm just filling time in the filibuster over here. But also responsive to the community needs of the day and flexible. And I think that's awesome. And so it's good to see that moralized. Rich, Richard's back. We've got two motions, and we're running.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'm supportive of this.
Could we have a roll call vote for ordinance number two, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mezro?
Yes, indeed.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
Funny, when he left, we hit a whole little bit.
Thanks, John.
All right, Johnny.
Thank you. It's the most efficient filibuster ever.
Take that, Strom.
That'll bring us to our action items this evening. The first one that we have in front of us is resolution number three. This is our updated regional, state, and federal policy agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tara Nelson with the Attorney's Office, also a policy coordinator. I've worked with you one-on-one previously in the last three or four years to develop this agenda. Today before you, we do have an updated 2023 policy agenda. You'll see in the packet, there are some slight changes to some of the verbiage within the agenda in and of itself. Nothing substantial. Happy to go through those with you as notated in the memorandum. You just let me know what you prefer. I can pull up the agenda. I can also pull up the memorandum. All the highlighted portions of the memo, we'll discuss what we changed. We do have a new Senate District 57, Senator Wills, and also Velasco out of Glenwood Springs in our House Districts.
We have a new Speaker of the House.
Yeah. And I did want to comment back to Rachel in our previous conversation about that House bill. It is relative to a gender-neutral bathroom on each floor where there is otherwise a public restroom.
Right, so...
Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Okay. I'm going to first clarify that.
It's a little bit of both.
Okay.
It's just potential legislation. It's not...
Yeah, yeah, no, my question's not about that. I just wanted to confirm, I was on somewhere, page 800 and something, the call-out section with the highlights, those are the only changes, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to double-check.
And I also just want to preface that this document is a guiding document. So if there are things that you, as a council member or mayor, feel that we need to discuss, change, look at verbiage specifically, we're also able to do that.
The only question I had, and I mostly was asking it with Torrey's head on, so maybe it's irrelevant, but in the section around, like, organics, waste, diversion, and all that, it just seemed like the definitions got narrower. And so I just wanted to, like, get our thoughts around that. Because we, over here, we've been doing more, and so it seemed like it was saying less.
I don't recall specifically exactly what Tess and Tim spoke about, but this was, you know, there's some new staff members in there. I think, well, I don't know exactly which section you're referring to. So on page 13, we have a few of these changes?
Yeah, that's the one, page 13. It just seemed like we were maybe less specificity, and I didn't know if there's anything behind that. I'm fine with the new language, but I wanted to pull it out. Because when I saw it, I saw the organics thing, or the compost in particular. And I thought, I wonder if Torrey...
And this other language on the first part of section 13, it talked about ASAP. You guys will be seeing that in February, as I said. But this, I think, is just specific to with our new director in climate, and she's taking this language. And Tim's gave his input also, so...
Just flagging that if we want convo, but I'm fine with that.
I like the new language.
Okay, great.
Rachel?
Yeah, thank you. Tara, this is great work, and it's really wonderfully put together. And it's a great guide for me and for others when we're attending regional meetings and people asking, what does Aspen stand for, or why are you voting this way on things? I would like to have the board consider the potential of a small addition in light of the decision of the Supreme Court this summer and our congressional rep now passing a bill or putting in a bill to defund Planned Parenthood. Under the health and well-being section, it's, I think, this is page eight or nine?
Do I have it up?
You know, at the very end, our last one is health and well-being.
Yep.
That must work together to ensure, the last sentence, work together to ensure community-wide access to a comprehensive set of health services. I would then make that a comma and say, including women's reproductive care.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Happy to implement that, Councilman.
Tara, I don't normally ask for this, but I printed out page 797 through 808 and, at home, and I started to read it. I can't read it. Are you going to have a printed copy that's going to be available to the public and us?
Yes, I'd like to give you copies for when you need it, when you're at your meetings. And also, we can keep it out, like, maybe at the front of the manager's office where the public can come. I don't like to print out a lot, but I do feel in this case it's important, especially since our legislative session is on its 2016th day, maybe? And it'll end on May 6th, so this is our time.
Tara, thank you so much. This is great work.
Yep, we can do this.
Thank you. And I think you're going down to Denver for one of those legislative update days, aren't you?
Yes, we're going to be going February 16th to Denver to the CML legislative webinar. We'll probably, or I guess it's not a webinar, it's in person. So you say everything being a webinar, and... Yeah, there'll probably be, like, National League of Cities. Usually Governor Polis is there if we do have a letter prepared in time relative to the housing legislation that you may be discussing at CAST on Thursday. Anyway, we'll see where we go, but just keep in touch with me. I love, you know, ensuring that we're instilling our community values and addressing what we need to in this agenda.
Well, I greatly appreciate you attending those, and that's why I was giving you extra credit.
See you then.
Thank you.
CML? See you then.
Okay, so do we need a motion on...
Yes, this is an action item. It is resolution number three with an amendment.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve resolution number three, series of 2023, the regional, state, and federal policy agenda with amendments.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for resolution number three, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mezro?
C.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes. This streak continues.
Thank you, Tara.
Now, we have one more item.
We are down to resolution number 16. This is the growth management allotment carry forward.
We did this just to keep Amy around for the whole meeting.
You've signed up for sushi, so that's nice.
Amy Simon, Planning Director. I'm here with our annual request for you to determine whether or not to roll forward growth management allotments that are left over. Growth management allotments that are left over from the previous year. In your packet on page 813, I'm sorry for the huge packet, there's a chart that describes to you that in the growth management system, we have established for many years a cap on various categories of development on how much activity we would like to see. And the idea is, as applications come forward, we'll subtract them from that total, and we'll feel that we have achieved our growth goals. We've told you before that a lot of the activity, the development and the construction activity we see in the community doesn't count as growth. For instance, the project that I presented to you at the beginning of the meeting, the 500 East Durant remodel, which is going to be a significant amount of reconstruction on the interior, as I mentioned, doesn't create any new net leasable. They're actually decreasing it by creating different corridors and elevators and things like that. So it's a decrease, but it's activity. But it doesn't count as growth in our system. And so as we've said to you in many previous years, we've used very little of the allotments in each category. For instance, there are allowed to be 18 new free-market homes per year. And that's not someone demolishing and replacing a home. It's very specific types of growth, like, for instance, I brought you the 949 West Smuggler historic landmark property that we subdivided and created a new lot that no one ever expected, and that new house is growth. That's the only allotment for this past year that counted. So we have 17 unused allotments, and we need to know if you'd like to roll them forward so that next year, there's 17 plus next year's 18 available. In the commercial sector, 33,000 square feet of new net leasable per year, we saw none this year. Lodge, 112 pillows allowed, we saw none. The new element of this year's discussion is your demolition allotments. That wasn't part of the program previously. As you well know, all six allotments for this year were awarded. There's none to roll forward. You didn't have the opportunity to provide any of the 35-year resident exemptions, so you could roll the two from this year to next year. We don't recommend you roll any forward. We don't feel that, as we haven't been using the allotments every year for many years in the past, there's no need to supplement next year's opportunities with what wasn't used this year. We do recognize this is something we need to continue to look at. We want to make this system meaningful. You certainly took a shot at that with your residential moratorium this last year of saying, but we do perceive certain things as growth, and we want to revise mitigation, and we want to put other limits on that type of development. We'll probably need to do that in the future with commercial and lodging as well. So the resolution we provided to you recommends that council does not roll forward any growth management allotments left from 2022.
Thanks, Amy. Rachel, questions?
I'm going to support the resolution as presented. I think that that's really important. Two thoughts that kind of hit me after that are, and I guess this work has already been done through the moratorium and so on, is to be able to really get a sense of how many other projects that are a type of growth go forward that are not captured in this. So that, and that may be redundant to what we've just looked through, or... But it's a good data point for our community to understand because those often have similar impacts on neighbors or neighborhoods. The second would be that I think that at some point in the future, later in 2023, it might be worth a conversation to say, are these numbers all still valid? Do we really want to have an allotment of 18 free-market homes or 17, you know, 100 and some odd pillows each year? Is that reasonable? And, you know, the larger reason for me asking that you look at the numbers are to perhaps restore that sense of competition that used to be in GMQS. But if there's already so many allotments available, I don't know that people are putting extra community benefit program-type items, which was what GMQ used to motivate a number of years ago. So that's just a future conversation for this board to have. Are these still the valid type of numbers we want to have? So anyhow.
I agree, Rachel. I've been on council for a while and gone through a few of these roll-forward amendments or action items. And I often think, well, why do we even have GMQS? Because we don't come anywhere close to it, and I think those numbers might need to be revisited.
I would make a motion to approve resolution number 106, 016, series of 2023. And you said it's just one way in affirmative of not rolling them forward, so...
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just, for the group, I would agree, future discussion about the realignment of sort of growth expectations, or should we even have any growth expectations, and metrics that better meet the lived experience of community. Because if we're using no growth, but we're also feeling drowning under construction, the metric is not fitting anymore.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please, for reso 16?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mezro?
Agreed.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes.
I move we adjourn.
Oh.
I meant for sushi.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Could we have a roll call vote for adjourning, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mezro?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes. We want to say thank you to grassroots as always and thank you for any of you that have joined us this evening. We do not have scheduled meetings next Monday and Tuesday. If you would like to contact your Aspen City Council members, you can do so very easily.
By email?
By email. Go to our website, we are all listed there, or you can just use the one heading council@aspian.gov.
Very good.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, there's sushi.